Good evening and welcome to tonight's Fifth District Congressional Town Hall, Telephone Town Hall with Congressman Tom Garrett. Thank you all for joining us for our seventh Town Hall of 2018. If you would like to ask a question, please dial *3 at any time during this conversation. Again, if you would like to ask a question, dial *3 at any time during this conversation. And if you would like to join our email newsletter list, you're more than welcome to dial *6 at any time. And you can give one of our friendly call screeners your email address and you can receive our weekly updates. For those of you on social media, you're more than welcome to visit www.facebook.com/RepGarrett and like our page on Facebook. And you can also follow Congressman Garrett on Twitter at twitter.com/RepTomGarrett. It looks like we've got a great deal of calls on the line this evening. So what we're going to do for the rest of the evening, if you have a question for Congressman Garrett, dial *3. And if you'd like to join our email list, dial *6 at any time. Please welcome to the phone this evening Congressman Tom Garrett.
Hello, and thank you again for joining us on this, our seventh Town Hall of 2018. I think our record of people on the line at any one time is about 16,000, so we're hopeful that we can break that tonight. Please do press *3 if you have questions. And certainly also let us know on the front end of your question where you're calling from. Lots of things going on, both in Washington and globally. I have spent a number of hours the past few days specifically on the Iranian nuclear situation. Watched with concern today as Iranian military forces fired at least 20 rockets into Israel from Syria. Generally speaking, the Iranians hide behind the veil of Hezbollah, which is wholly funded and controlled subsidiary of Iran. But in this instance, it would appear that Iranian military forces, the IRGC, and the Quds Forces subsidiary too, that entity actually fired into Israel. So really sort of tells us what we already thought we knew as it relates to who that regime is. But with that said, we welcome your calls on any subject matter that you care to talk about. And with that, we will open it up to questions. Do again, press *3 if you have questions, and *6 if you wish to subscribe to our email, Twitter at RepTomGarrett, Facebook at RepTomGarrett. And again, thank you so much for being on.
Thank you very much Congressman Garrett. For those of you who would like to ask a question, we are currently filling up our queue right now, so please dial *3 at any time. And if you'd like to join our email list, dial *6. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We are just having a little issue getting all of our calls ready to begin our conversation with Congressman Garrett, live from Washington DC. If at any time during tonight's conversation, your question is not answered, or you unfortunately have not been able to ask Congressman Garrett your question, you're always welcome to visit And Congressman Garrett will respond to your email with any questions you may have. Again, if you would like to ask a question at any point during tonight's conversation, please dial *3. And if you would like to join our email subscriber list, please dial *6. We're just waiting on a couple of questions here.
One question, I think. Okay, joining us tonight, we have Joanne from Charlottesville.
Oh my gosh, I can't believe I got on. Okay, my name is Joanne Robertson from Charlottesville, Virginia. And my question is healthcare. And you know, I feel undecided about, you know, who to vote for. And I want to know what can be done about healthcare because Congressman Garrett, this is my first time I've gotten through to you, but you know, I don't feel like healthcare is something, you know, I just feel that we should have compassion towards one another. And when we're ill, you know, we don't choose to be that way. And I remember my son, when, you know, we had private insurance, and when he was little, he was so sick and I couldn't afford to go. And there was a time when I was in the emergency room, and I literally, he had asthma so bad. I looked in the trash can at tubing because we couldn't afford it, that someone else had used. And I didn't use it, but it hurts so bad. And I want to know what is happening with CHIPS and with like compassion for one another? I understand, you know, but there's hardworking families that are being affected by this. I want to know what you think about this.
So, and did I understand you correctly that you asked about CHIPS specifically on the, on the, on the first?
Well, I'm asking, well, I'm, not only that, but you know, I know that there's a huge, you know, Trump Care, I didn't like that at all. It was like, oh my gosh, why would you even have it? I mean, I understand the problems with Obamacare, but I also understand, like, what do you have to say? Like, are you willing to take a bold move and jump out there and say something different? That's what I want to hear. I'm an undecided voter. I want to hear what you have to say about this.
So, first things first, we took a lot of sort of rhetorical barbs last year to include from Governor McCall if calling us, calling on us to fund CHIPS. It's funny because the ranking Democrat on the particular committee of jurisdiction asked those who were hurling that sort of invective if they could just hold on. We had a plan. We actually passed CHIPS extensions for 10 years, so that is covered for the next 10 years. I voted for CHIPS every single time that I had the opportunity to do so because we prioritize obviously the most vulnerable among us. And CHIPS, for those of you who are on the call or are aware, is healthcare targeted and ensuring that children who through no fault of their own have a circumstance wherein they need healthcare but don't have access to it are covered. It's essentially a safety net for the most vulnerable among us. And there was a lot of, again, political rhetoric sort of levied, but every single time, I believe three different occasions, that I had the opportunity to vote in favor of extending that, we did, and we were able to successfully do that, pass that through the Senate. As it relates to the overarching problem of healthcare, you have to really understand where you are and how you got there to try to start to address the problem. The reality is that premiums and deductibles for families in the Fifth District and across the entire nation have gone up every single year after Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act passed. In fact, you're looking at about 100% increase since the Affordable Care Act passed for individuals and about 140% for families. So that's really sort of something that was meant to solve the problem, exacerbated the problem. The other thing that we see, and particularly in the Charlottesville region, Almarle County, Green County, Nelson County, Fluvana County, we have the highest premiums in the nation. We also have a fraction of the number of providers that we used to have. In other words, what's happened under the Affordable Care Act is the number of providers has been cut nearly in half when there are fewer providers, and that means you cannot shop for a plan. When the government mandates what coverage you need regardless of who you are, what your circumstances is, that circumstances are, that means that you cannot choose between plans that suit you best. That pushes up prices for everyone. I was a staunch opponent of the first Trump Care, Obamacare repeal, pledged to not vote for it, didn't vote for it. The second plan that we did pass out of the House was the only plan for a number of years that's existed wherein the Congressional Budget Office projected a decrease in premiums, a decrease in deductibles, which is the goal that we've been shooting for, as well as siloizing money that would provide catastrophic insurance for those, the most vulnerable among us, people with pre-existing conditions, people in the high-risk pool. The reason that that makes sense is, in the healthcare realm right now, you've got a circumstance where about 95% of costs are being driven by about 5% of patients. What this would do would be allow us to take the 95% and put them into essentially a pool wherein their costs would go down because the probability of need to access that care would go down. And then we would set aside monies to ensure that there was coverage for those people who had difficulty finding it under the market paradigm as it existed. But the reality is that there's a reason that Optima Healthcare, that Anthem, that Blue Cross, that Kaiser all supported the Obamacare Plan, the Affordable Care Act, and that is that they're the big winners in this program. Essentially, Optima and Kaiser and Anthem all support the Affordable Care Act. And then if you look at United Healthcare, for example, profits, they're up 600% since the Affordable Care Act passed. So if you follow the money, you see who the winners are, and it's not the citizens of the Fifth District of Virginia. What we want to do is create options where you can tailor a plan to your specific needs, not pay for a one-size-fits-all plan that pushes everyone's costs up. And we want to allow competition in the marketplace. I was a champion of a bill that was carried by former Congressman Tom Periello, McCarran Ferguson, Healthcare Reform Act. We actually passed that out of the House. We're waiting on action from the Senate. That would actually allow competition off state, across state lines, across regions. That would allow for someone other than Optima to come into the Charlottesville area and compete and push our costs down. Because ultimately, just because there was rhetoric against the bill doesn't mean that that bill wouldn't work. And an example I would give you is the tax cuts and job creation bill that we passed. In fact, that bill was underwater, was upside down in the polls before we passed it. The data that's come out after it passed shows that something like 3 to 5 million Americans received either raises or bonuses. It shows, according to CBS Boston, which is a high state and local income tax locality, that 90% of their viewership would receive tax cuts. The average family of four across the Fifth District is somewhere in the realm of $2,000 a year in additional money in their wallets. So that's not the wealthy family of four. A single mother with two children takes home more money under this plan, but there was a political angle that tried to sort of turn people against it. I'm convinced that the second AHCA that I did support and vote for would have done what the nonpartisan Congressional Budget Office said it would have done, and it has pushed down premiums and deductibles and made more accessible healthcare for more people.
Joanne, thank you so much for that call. For anybody who else would like to ask a call, or excuse me, ask a question during this Telephone Town Hall meeting, please dial *3 at any time. Again, if you would like to ask any question of Congressman Tom Garrett, please dial *3 at any time during this conversation. And let's go to Peter.
Hey, Peter, uh, let me know where you're calling from.
I'm calling from Halifax, Virginia.
Outstanding. Thank you for calling, Peter. What's your questions?
Well, first of all, I like reading your little comments in the Gazette, Virginia. Very interesting to read every Wednesday. I want to know, back when President Obama was president, the Republicans were the no-votes all the time, anytime the Democrats wanted to get anything through. Now that President Trump is president, the Democrats are voting no for everything that the Republicans want to get through. And the Republicans are touting the Democrats for doing it. Why is it that you guys can't get along and do stuff that's going to be for the good of the country instead of what's good for the party?
No, I think it's an excellent question, and candidly, I want to ask that going sort of a little bit deeper down in the weeds, we don't paint with such a broad brush because there were Republicans who were willing to work across the aisle with President Obama, and there have been Democrats who've been willing to work across the aisle with President Trump. What I say all the time is, I'm absolutely willing to admit when I think President Trump is wrong. I'd like it if other people were willing to admit that when they thought he was right. I can give examples of this. I was essentially sort of excoriated by the White House staff for my refusal to support the first Obamacare replacement plan. I didn't think it pushed down premiums and deductibles. I told them there was no way I was going to vote for it. Ultimately, it didn't get my vote. The National Defense Authorization Act, I wouldn't vote for because every single federal government entity is required by law to be audited, and the DOD never has. I understand that a large portion of that budget is secret, and I'm fine with them labeling it as such. But just because I'm a veteran and somebody who supports our armed forces, I don't think we should give a blank check. You know, recently on the omnibus bill, we received sort of an imporation to support it all the way up until the point on Friday when the President said he didn't want to sign it, and he would never do it again. I didn't vote for that, and not only did I not vote for that, I didn't vote for the rule to allow that to get to the floor, which is sort of in the weeds, but that's a pretty remarkable circumstance. And so there's any number of issues where we've sort of stood up and said, yeah, my job's, look, we wouldn't need a Congress if we were to do everything that the parties occupying the White House suggested. So I feel your frustration. We've got, I think, 40 some odd Democrat bills that we're co-sponsoring. Maybe it's 28, and then about 40 Democrats co-sponsoring various bills of ours. And I think that the country's ready for some bipartisanship. A really, example that I'm really proud of was the surveillance of American citizens by essentially the federal government as it relates to our powers to surveil internationally and FISA. We stood alongside not just, not just Rand Paul and Justin Amash, but also Democrat Senator Ron Wyden, Democrat Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren, Democrat Congressman Ted Lieu, and said, you know what, I think that we should be able to get together in a bipartisan manner to suggest that the government shouldn't be snooping on American citizens absent probable cause in a hearing. Now unfortunately, that bipartisan effort failed, as a number of folks on both sides disagreed. But I think your frustration is well-founded. I share it, and we try to sort of let our actions speak louder than our words. I've already spoken about the McCarran Ferguson bill that we got behind that was originally filed again by Congressman Tom Periello and Congresswoman Betsy Markey from Colorado. Good policy's good policy, and good policy doesn't have a party label on it. You know, I certainly identify as a Republican and certainly support Republican policies more often than not. But what people expect from us is to review policy and make decisions based on what we said when we campaigned we would do, and that's what we think we've done. I think, you know, without disparaging any of my colleagues by name, that there are a lot of people who might be able to learn from that. Thank you, Peter, from Halifax for the call. John, I think you are in the queue. John, are you on the line?
Have you got me?
I got you. Is this John?
Yes, it is. We've met. I live in Hardy, and I'm tickled to hear you talking, and I wanted to know if you would explain for everyone about this bill they called the rescission, and how it's going to do any good to save money for the government, or whether it's just a big arm-waving exercise. And thank you for what you've been doing for us.
Thank you a lot, John. And I do, I do enjoy getting down to all parts of the district and appreciate you being on the line. So rescission is essentially a do-over, for lack of a more legally appropriate word, as it relates to expenditures that were laid out in the omnibus budget bill. It's an idea that would allow us to go back and check some of the profligate spending, I think, that was present in that omnibus. Having said that, if the question is, what is rescission and will it work? There's been some very loud signaling from the Senate that they're not going to allow for rescission. The paradigm in the Senate right now is that you got essentially a one-vote majority with Senator McCain not in Washington DC, and you got a lot of people candidly, and the reason I voted against this omnibus budget was because what they did was they figured out what pet project money they needed to put in to get as many members as they needed to pass the thing, and never asked the people who wanted to control spending what they thought we should do. And so there's, you know, Senator Schumer ironically, one of chief, one of the chief antagonists of President Trump, said, and I quote, "We burned the midnight oil and got a really, really good product for the American people." Obviously Speaker Ryan and Leader McConnell all felt like this was a good deal. Nancy Pelosi felt like this was a good deal. And so when you have a lot of members who are really, I think, more concerned with placating their leadership than sort of being fiscally prudent and adhering to enumerated powers, that's what you get. Rescission's certainly an alternative. I'm not optimistic, particularly with the current configuration and climate in the Senate, that it's something that's going to be realistically viable as it relates to passage. Thank you again, John, from Franklin. And I think I have, I believe Sharon on the line.
That's where my man, uh, Jay, um...
Sharon, are you on?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Congressman. Thank you for taking my question.
Thank you.
What I am interested to hear is, what's your opinion of President Trump's recent decision to cancel the Iran weapons deal? And what do you think are the implications for us with our allies? And how do we move forward now that this change has been made?
Well, I've been an outspoken opponent of the intricacies of the JCPOA, the Iran nuclear deal, for a long time. I can't claim that if I were in the White House, I would have handled this the same way as the President because I wouldn't have. I think we could have retained the framework of the JCPOA and demanded to reopen negotiations on things like ballistic missile technology. I will tell you that the JCPOA, the Iran nuclear deal, is a bad product for any number of reasons, but the most easily illustrated is the fact that the UN Security Council resolutions governing Iranian arms procurement that existed before the Iran nuclear deal forbid Iranian development of ballistic missiles, and the Iranian nuclear deal didn't. In fact, the language in the UN Security Council's resolution said, "Iran shall not undertake the development of ballistic missiles that might be used to deliver nuclear weapons." And the Iran nuclear deal said, "Iran is called upon not to." Now, the difference between shall not and called upon not to obviously is pretty darn significant, and in fact, the Iranians began testing ballistic missiles, which tactically and strategically are only good for the delivery of nuclear weapons, really, almost immediately upon the assumption of office of President Trump. So we sort of know there's a problem there, as do our allies. It's the P5 plus one, you have France, Great Britain, the permanent members of the Security Council, plus Germany. And I'll tell you that the back channel communication from those countries is, they know that there were changes that needed to be made to the JCPOA as well. Now, the immediate implications, I think the Iranians want us to see, and that is literally Iranian government-supported military forces comprised of Iranians, not Syrian proxies, not Lebanese proxies, have been firing missiles into Israel over the last six to 12 hours. This is, I mean, you know, I think the simplest way to put it, an act of war. I think there's been some real restraint on the part of our Israeli allies. But having said that, that speaks volumes about who the Iranian regime is. So, you know, it didn't take them long to tip their hand. We had probably a two or three-hour hearing, and if you go to YouTube and type in Congressman Tom Garrett yesterday on the Iran nuclear deal, the JCPOA, wherein I read the comments of the ranking Democrat member Elliot Engel and four of the six senior ranking Democrats on the JCPOA from 2015 when it was passed. And what they said was, it was a bad deal, it was a dangerous deal, it injected somewhere, and we're not even sure, between $60 billion and $250 billion into the Iranian economy, which was used to support the Iranian Revolutionary Guard and Hezbollah, which was created by the Iranian government, and has the unique distinction of being the only terrorist group that anyone I know, including the panel yesterday, because I asked them to name, that had murdered human beings on every single inhabited continent on the planet. Australia, South America, Africa, Asia, Europe, North America. And so that's a, that's a byproduct of the Iranian regime funded by money that we let the Iranians have as part of the Iranian nuclear deal. Right? And we asked the experts on the panel yesterday if there's ever been an agreement on nuclear weapons that the Iranians have entered into that they haven't broken, and the answer was no. So we prefer diplomatic solutions where possible, but what we need to understand in the macro is that when you have a doctrine of mutually assured destruction with a nation like the Soviet Union wherein you have people who are, by their dogma, atheists, who then obviously know that when they die, it's all over, that doctrine works. When you have a mutually assured destruction doctrine with the regime wherein the mullahs say they need to expedite the coming of the hidden Imam, and that that must be done by shedding the blood of those who don't agree with them, then that paradigm doesn't work. And even President Obama said that after the 10 years was up, that the Iranians would be free to acquire a nuclear weapon. So what we did was essentially try to buy time whilst injecting money into the Iranian economy and the Iranian military, because the Iranian military controls the bulk of the economy, literally, that would allow the regime not to change. So again, were I in the White House, which I'm obviously not, I might not have taken the step that the President did to pull out entirely, but I certainly would have been trying. And the British and the French and the Germans all acknowledge this is necessary to renegotiate provisions on inspection regimes, et cetera, to make this agreement work. Let me give you some more examples. Under the JCPOA, the Iran nuclear deal, we were not allowed, according to the Iranians, to inspect any military sites. So they could have all the nuclear programs they wanted at their military sites, and we couldn't inspect. And the contemplated framework included a 24-day notification. 24 days. My Democrat friend and colleague Brad Sherman said, for gosh sakes, I could clean out my entire garage in 24 days before we were able to get on the ground on declared nuclear sites. So while we, to the best of our knowledge, had an Iranian government that was in compliance with this plan, we had no access and we had no inspection regime to ensure that that was in fact the case, and we had an entity in the mullahs in Iran that quite literally has broken every agreement they've entered into, and my Democrat colleagues Elliot Engel and Brad Sherman and Lois Frankel and Ted Deutsch, et cetera, all said two years ago, this was a horrible deal that we shouldn't enter into. In fact, Brad Sherman said, and I can post the text, "The next President should get out of this because it's not a treaty, it hasn't been ratified by the Senate." The reason it wasn't ratified by the Senate was two-thirds of the Senate opposed it to include a bipartisan majority. It wasn't a legislative-executive agreement under the Vienna Convention. This was essentially a handshake deal binding to the previous administration, and I think there's been some overselling of the nature of what this was. And I think, according to my Democratic colleague Brad Sherman, who opposed this deal and is now critical of the administration, I guess because he doesn't like who won the election, it's one that needed to be renegotiated anyway and was completely legal to do so. So I don't agree with exactly how the President did it, but I think giving the Iranians sort of a breakout period to establish a nuclear weapon and not having any inspection and allowing for ballistic missile development in conjunction with all sorts of bad entities, because I can assure you the Iranians talked to the North Koreans, was bad policy and ultimately will be safer for having done it. Because gosh forbid Iran ever has a nuclear weapon and a delivery mechanism to use it. They promised essentially that they would.
Sharon, thank you so much for that call. For those of you on the call this evening who would like to ask a question of Congressman Tom Garrett, please dial *3 at any time. Again, if you would like to ask a question, please dial *3 at any time. And if you would like to sign up for our email subscriber list, please dial *6 at any time. Again, *3 for questions, *6 for email newsletter subscriber list.
Who do we have? Ms. Lyle, Prince Edward County? Ms. Lyle, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
How are you, ma'am?
I'm doing fine, and you?
Well, if I complain, then you might hear like a thunderclap, and God might strike me with lightning. I've been blessed and don't have any right to complain.
No, I hear you. Same here, same here. My question is, I live here in Prince Edward County of Virginia, and what I'm having a lot of frustration is lack of jobs and lack of jobs for offenders. I'm a DOC worker, Department of Corrections, and we have a lot of reentry rehabilitation things for the young men and women to get into. However, when they come out, there is issues that they run into that cause them to be re-entered or receivetate back into the prison system because there's lack of jobs. They go out with enthusiasm to find a job, but yet then they don't find a job because there's no factories, there's no, there's nothing here but either prison or fast food. And fast food is definitely not going to give a person a living. Not even DOC. I worked as DOC, and many of our officers worked two jobs to survive. So my question is, what are we doing to build the economy with jobs and to help the, give a second chance to non-violent, or even, you know, if you, if they've done their time?
Right.
What are we doing to help the society?
Well, un-
Because in the long run, it helps us.
Absolutely. Anybody, look, I think it was Ronald Reagan who said that the best social program that exists is a good-paying job.
Correct.
And I think what we've seen after the tax cut and- And I think what we've seen, um, after the tax cut and Jobs Act is quite literally jobs spring up in the fifth district and across the country. And I can give specific examples, Amthor, Piedmont Precision Machining, uh, who are hiring because of that policy change. And that's what we hoped for. We also had the best month in terms of revenue generation in American history in April, after that tax cut and after the regulatory reform we've done. We've got, now, I know that this doesn't manifest itself uniformly, that there are different circumstances in Prince Edward County than there are in Falkland, and that there are different circumstances in Franklin County than there are in Brunswick. But we have fourteen states in the last six months that have had record low unemployment, new records set. So, that would indicate we're moving in the right direction, um, and so I'm happy with that. The manufacturing growth in this country started to tick up round about January of 2017, um, and it's been going at a pace that's not paralleled for a long, long time.
Yeah, I would agree with, um, Donald by bringing back our, um, our, you know, our manufacturers and stuff back to the United States. That's why I switched from buying foreign cars to buy American cars. However, um, I want to, you know, I have an urge to help, um, people that doesn't have the opportunity to find a job, you know, when they get out, because, and then their probation's are violating them, you know, um, and I'm not getting on just the probation, but I mean, they're getting violated because they're not, you know, they can't get a ride, because they can't get the driver's license. Or, you know, it's just a...
Well, let me, let me, let me touch on that, because
Okay.
Uh, maybe I'll surprise you. Um, I've actually got a record, uh, in the legislature on this issue. I will tell you that yesterday, uh, and anyone who would like to verify this, they can check. I spoke with a gentleman named Jay James, who's with the Bridge Ministry out of Buckingham County, that seeks to help people getting out of our local correctional facilities, get their lives in order and get a job. Works with a gentleman named Pastor William Washington, um, and I support programs like that. I had a long meeting just yesterday, or what's today? Uh, the day before, in the evening, on criminal justice reform, uh, on ensuring that we can give people who deserve a second chance, that we don't create a cycle so vicious that people can't escape it. But let's talk about putting our money where our mouths are. When I was a member of the Virginia Senate, I carried a bill because the law in Virginia says that on a first offense misdemeanor possession, not possession with intent to distribute, but possession of marijuana, you sacrifice your driver's license for six months. Now, we catch young people who've made the mistake of possessing, not possession with intent to distribute, these aren't drug dealers, marijuana, and we say, "Hey, you need to get a job and contribute to society and give me your driver's license for six months?" That's insanity. And so, the person who carried the bill to change that law in Virginia is me, because it makes no sense if you want to make people, um, be constructive members of society, if you want to help people help themselves to take their driver's license on a misdemeanor offense first conviction. Um, right now, I'm advocating on behalf of Reform of the National Policy on specifically marijuana, and here's why. Uh, there are three reasons. Number one, uh, how do we tell our young people that this is a nation with a justice system that treats everyone equally, when the federal government, the national government, enforces its laws one way in one place and then refuses to enforce them in another? So, right now federally, marijuana is still illegal in the entire nation. And yet, in Colorado, people have been named Entrepreneur of the Year for opening dispensaries. In Virginia, if a young person did the same thing, they'd be sent to federal prison. And that's absolutely wrong. Justice that is not blind is not justice. And we've been a leading advocate in that fight. In fact, federally, we're carrying that bill. Um, secondarily, um, on that front, obviously, I think patients and their doctors should be able to make decisions for themselves. And tertiaryly, uh, industrial hemp, which isn't marijuana, it's the cousin thereof, is something that we import to the tune of between six hundred million and two billion dollars a year into this country. And yet, our farmers in Prince Edward County, in Halifax County, in Lunenburg, and Mecklenburg, and Brunswick, and Bedford can't grow that crop? That's ridiculous. So, what I try to do is find laws that make no sense. Now, when I was a prosecutor, I enforced the laws as uniformly as I could possibly do it without regard to how you looked, who your daddy was, where you came from, or how much money you had, because that was my job.
Right.
But right now, we keep laws on the books that have an absolutely disparate impact. Um, again, we will ignore the smell of marijuana on the lawn at UVA, but if somebody in the housing project has it, we lock them up? That's hypocrisy, un-American. So, uh, I've got a record on this subject matter. It strikes me as ridiculous that you would take somebody with a first defense misdemeanor conviction, tell them to clean up their act and get a job, and then take their driver's license. And I hadn't just talked about it, I've carried the bills. So, that's where we are. I think it would align with where you are. I think in order to be a nation of laws, and I hope that we are and will be, that you need to enforce your laws uniformly without regard to circumstance, and that's what we stand for. And I think if we do that and we step back and say, "What just doesn't make sense?" Then we can create a circumstance wherein people can find opportunity even when they fail. Because everybody's failed, and there's no shame in failure. It means you've tried. Um, and a lot of people who've done amazing things, uh, didn't do amazing things their first time out. So, that's where we are. And I'm really grateful for your call. I hope, I hope we've answered your question.
Well, I just want one more question, and, um, I want to say, and you're right about what you're saying, and I really, truly love what you just said. And, uh, because it just weighs heavy on my heart. And I want to, you know, because my son also, when he was in high school, took a drink to school, and yes, I know he was wrong, and I disciplined him for that. However, and he got suspended, but they also took his driver's license that he did not have. He had never got a driver's license yet.
Right.
And, and then, from there, it was a downhill spiral. So, um,
So, what we have?
But what I'm saying is, my question also is, minimum wages. Where do you stand on the minimum wages? Now, the economy is going up so high, but minimum wages is so low.
So, I think if the government gets into the business of creating a paradigm wherein it sets the minimum wage, the purchasing power on the front end of the individual increases, but then the ability to purchase a quantity of commodity decreases. And so, I think that we should allow for markets to drive that, because the reality is that while there are real challenges all across this country, um, the cost to buy a gallon of milk in, say, Manhattan is entirely different than it is in, say, Pennsylvania County, where you're, you know, a few miles away from the dairy operation at Java. And, and I'm just afraid that controlling that at a federal level beyond where we are or with too much rapidity and change upward actually, um,
But I want you to think about this.
Problem, the other thing that I want to say-
Everything else, I love what you said, so I want you to think about this. No matter what-
Well, let me, let me, I'm not going to cut you off. Don't, 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 don't cut her off the line, please. The other thing I want to say is that when you have a situation where we don't control our southern border and we allow low-wage workers to come in here unchecked, that drives down our wages. And so, the market's not allowed to work when you have people coming in and working illegally, and that's another reason we need to control that southern border, because ultimately-
That's right.
The responsibility of the national government is to protect the people of the nation. And, and while I am in favor of a robust immigration system, I think it should be an illegal immigration system. And again, that pushes down wages-
Now, I'm with Donald on that.
So, yes, ma'am, I'm going, go ahead.
Yes, I'm with that controlling, because equal pay for equal, everybody. How, I don't, I don't think you should abuse anybody. I don't care if they're here illegally or not. And if they want to be here, they should come over here legally and, 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 um, do like the rest of Americans. However, I'm, I want you to think, and, um, because of the fact that people going to buy what they want, what they need, no matter what it is.
Right, but again, if you have, if you have, if you have people who are here willing to work for less than the current minimum wage, then what's the incentive for employers to hire anyone above the current minimum wage?
And you're right, and you're right.
So, it-
And that do need to be fixed.
But, but thank you immensely for what you do at DOC.
That's why I was with Donald with that.
Let me, let me say one more thing about what happened to your son and criminal justice reform. We have a number of mandatory minimum sentences at the state and federal level, some of which I agree with. There are a certain percentage of people, and you know this if you work in DOC, who, for whatever reason, just seem to have been wired in a way such that they're just scary. Uh, and I can talk about particular individuals and cases I prosecuted. A person who burst through an eighty-some-odd-year-old woman's door and violently assaulted her. That's a scary person. But then you have people who were subjected to mandatory minimums. Your son, for example, as a minor in possession of alcohol, had a mandatory license suspension, and the judge didn't have any say in that. And so, we should relook these mandatory minimums in some instances. Again, where you have a violent offender, uh, who's perpetrated a great, uh, damage to a human being and the people who love them, uh, not so much. Um, but in circumstances like a young person who brings a drink to school, uh, requiring a suspension of a license by law without allowing the judge to analyze the totality of the circumstances, strikes me as a little bit harsh. Uh, and I think we need to make sure that we have good women and men on our courts, um, and that some of these mandatory minimums aren't maybe the best policy. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, thank you very much for your call, Ms. Lyle. For those of you who would like to ask a question for the duration of the rest of tonight's Town Hall, please dial star three at any time. Again, if you would like to ask a question, please dial star three at any time. And if you would like to sign up for our email e-newsletter list, please dial star six, and you'll be connected with one of our call screeners, who will take down your information. Again, star three to ask a question, star six to sign up for our newsletter updates. Congressman Garrett?
Okay, next question, I think, is Nina? Uh, are you on the line, ma'am?
Here I am.
Well, thank you for calling.
Hi, thanks for, uh, thanks for taking the time to talk to us. I'm calling you from Charlottesville, and I want to know how on earth you can reassure the citizens of Charlottesville that you stand with the, that you do not stand with the Nazis, with the Nazis that visited us on August the twelfth. Um, our town was terrorized by some folks, and it's clear by your pic, by the picture that is hanging in your office with yourself and Jason Kessler, that you stand clearly with the Nazis that came here. And I want to know, do you stand with President, also, do you stand with President Trump when he says that they were good people on both sides? I don't see any good people, the Nazis that came here certainly weren't good, to my estimation.
Okay, so, first of all, there's not a picture on my wall in my office, nor has there ever been, of me and Jason Kessler. Um, there was a picture taken of a young man named Jason Kessler, who I believe, according to the Daily Progress, spent about eight years with Occupy Wall Street, who came to my office in March of 2017. The first rally that Kessler led, uh, that I'm aware of, was in May of 2017. May comes after March. The day after the May rally, I posted an article, an op-ed, that is still on the internet at our official website, in response to that. Kessler said, "This is about free speech." And I said, "Listen here, partner, I believe in free speech, but when you wear all white and carry torches at night walking next to a Confederate statue, I think you're either stupid or lying." And then, the first person in the nation, and I would love for somebody to demonstrate, uh, that I was wrong, or at least the first member of Congress in the nation, on August twelfth, to call what happened, the tragedy that happened in Charlottesville, the attack on the young woman whose name I won't name in order to not hurt her family and friends, to call that domestic terrorism was me. If you don't believe that, check my personal Twitter feed, the tweet is still there. I said, "What happened in Charlottesville was domestic terrorism, plain and simple. It should be called as much." After that, I spent about two hours on national media outlets. I have all the video and all the audio. This is after denouncing that ridiculous excuse for a human being named Jason Kessler, denouncing that ridiculous excuse for a human being named Jason Kessler. After that, I filed a resolution condemning Jason Kessler and the Nazis and all who wrought horror on our bucolic district in the Congress of the United States, which passed and was signed into law. Before that, I repudiated the group on the radio suggesting that there was no way that I would join any group that didn't believe that we should judge individuals based on the content of their character and not the color of their skin. Over two years before that, I filed the bill by myself in the General Assembly of Virginia that honored civil rights hero Barbara John with a statewide holiday. April twenty-third, we celebrated Barbara John's Day for the first time in Virginia history. And the person who filed that bill was me. And I did that years before I'd ever heard of the jackass named Jason Kessler. So, for those who seek to suggest that by virtue of the fact that I met with a constituent who had his picture taken with me, which quite literally happens multiple times every day and probably dozens of times every week while I'm in Washington, DC, that somehow defines me or who I, who I am, they are guilty of the highest level of political dishonesty that flies in the face of a record of standing up and saying this. This country was founded by imperfect people like a slave owner named Jefferson, who had near-perfect ideas, like, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, and all people are created equal." And so, the American Revolution began when we attacked the unjustified, absolutely wrong rule of a king from across an ocean. And the American Revolution continued when nearly a million Americans, between combat casualties, starvation, and disease, died during the American Civil War to rid us of the ridiculous, horrible, unconscionable institution of slavery. And the American Revolution then continued some fifty-five years later, when we finally granted the right to vote to women in this country. And the American Revolution continued when a sixteen-year-old young woman named Barbara Johns took up the same cause, that is, liberty and justice for all, that a thirty-seven-year-old lawyer named Patrick Henry did, when he said, "Give me liberty or give me death." When that sixteen-year-old high school student led the student walkout in Prince Edward County, Virginia, from Moton High School, because she believed, as did her Uncle Vernon Johns, that while America wasn't perfect, we had a duty to try to get there. And again, April twenty-third is Barbara John's Day, because that's the anniversary of the date that she led that movement. She's the only student, the only student, to lead a walkout that was amalgamated into Brown versus Board of Education. And I filed the bill to honor her forever, years before I ever met a guy who stood next to me in my office. So, here's what I ask you. If you think that filing that bill, that standing up for equality and that understanding that the American Revolution is ongoing to ensure that every person in this country, regardless of who they love or how they look or how they worship, every person in this country should be judged on the content of their character and not the color of their skin. If you believe that me doing that years before I'd ever heard of that clown is consistent with the rhetoric that somehow I think like him because he stood next to me in a photograph, then that's okay. But if you think that the suggestion that me standing next to that guy in a photograph, which I do with people from all over the district, all over the country, and yes, I met with people today from three different nations of the world, Congo, Germany, and Romania, that me standing next to people and taking pictures with them makes me them, you're wrong. And if you think that the argument that somehow it does is ridiculous, you need to tell all their voters? Because I know who I am, my wife knows who I am, my friends know whom I am, and my God knows who I am. And the suggestion that a photograph dictates who I am is ridiculous. So, I appreciate your question, but I know my heart, and I hope you will as well. Chris, from Bedford, I'm going to take a deep breath. I get a little worked up. Uh, Chris, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Hello?
Chris, what's your question? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank, that's all right, thank you for taking my question.
I'm glad I don't have a blood pressure cuff on right now.
(laughing) Um, I live in a rural area of Bedford County, which is actually an annexed part of Lynchburg, and we have no internet access here. Uh, we can't use our cell phones, because the cell phones don't work well. Um, I've called local and state people, and they said it's a federal, state, local problem. What's being done to get access to rural people, to high-speed internet?
Yes, ma'am, so what we're trying to do at the federal level, and I want to do what's appropriate to each level of government at that level of government. In other words, if you want to have high-speed broadband provided by the federal government, we could probably do that, but if it broke, who would you call? And how much would it cost? And how much money would be wasted when they took tax dollars from Bedford and sent it to- it to Washington, DC? But what we can do, and what we're working on, is pilot projects by way of grants. We're doing that right now with a particular entity in Mecklenburg County. And also, deregulation to allow those who would provide high-speed internet services to people in rural areas to do so without a cost preventative sort of paradigm. So, we're working on those things. But let me give an example. There's a locality in the district wherein I spoke to individuals at the locality government level, and they were working on high-speed broadband, and the number that they'd chosen to define the words "high speed" was three and a half times faster at the time I spoke to than the federal definition thereof. The other thing that I would suggest is that if we cannot take so much money from Bedford County to Washington, but leave a little bit of money in Bedford County, that Bedford County can provide that service far more effectively than the federal government, and if your broadband goes out, you'll actually know somebody who you can call on your Board of Supervisors or at the county government level to complain. Because the paradigm is that the farther the money travels from the place that it's taken, that is, any tax dollar taken from anywhere in the fifth district that travels metaphorically and at some level literally to Washington, DC, it's returned at cents on the dollar. Maybe if you send money to DC and you give back fifty cents to the dollar, you've done pretty well. But what we need to do is not take so much federally, let the local and state governments sort of address problems at the local and state government level, because they know the problems better than folks in Washington can, because they'll be more responsive, and because they'll be more cost effective. Having said that, again, my answer is not, we're not doing anything. My answer is, there are grants to find pilot programs to see what works. And again, we're currently working to help with one of those in the fifth district. And also, there's a regulatory scheme that makes it cost prohibitive for entities that have access to things like utility poles and lines to provide service in areas of low population density. We need to make it more cost effective for them to do it, so that they'll be incentivized to do it. Belinda from Franklin County.
Hello?
Belinda, are you on the line?
Yes, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes, Belinda, can you hear me?
Um, I want to know what your stand is on all the fracking and gas pipelines that are coming through, particularly in my area, private companies taking private people's land for eminent domain.
Right. So, I oppose eminent domain, except for when it falls into the constructive sort of idea of eminent domain as envisioned by the people who gave us the idea. That is, that there should be a legitimate use that's necessary, that's not something that's done essentially in the sort of Kelo versus New London scheme, where people are essentially subverting the underlying community need standard. Having said that, I generally tend to support pipelines. Having said that, I absolutely do not support sort of the structure that the Mountain Valley and ACP have gone through under. I'm really disenchanted with the process for comments and review that's been powered down to the localities. That's one of the reasons that I've signed on to a bill that would require more transparency in the process, and more notification to communities, and that would require that FERC and the other entities that approve these pipelines listen to the people in the communities that they're affecting, and that they consider all routes. Because one of the things that I fear is that there are alternative routes that haven't been considered, and that essentially, once Governor McAuliffe and Governor Northam said this was okay, because primarily this has been decided at the state level, but once those two Democrat governors said this is okay, it was just sort of a check-the-block process in the pipeline approval. So, we've signed on to a bill that would require greater transparency, more clarity in communication. I am absolutely not opposed to the idea of pipelines, but I am opposed to the idea of somewhat how these pipelines have been done. Having said that, again, right now, the federal entity responsible is FERC. They got the green light from Governor McAuliffe, and Governor Northam is really, I think, the last best hope for people who oppose the pipeline. But for whatever reason, maybe it's the Arbiza side by name, he doesn't take a lot of my Val in Charlotte. Val, are you on the line?
Can you hear me now?
Is this Val?
Yeah.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing all right for a poor boy. So, there. I understand you're a veteran, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, wonderful Veterans Administration. Can you tell me why it takes three years plus to get a claim approved, an award made?
Yeah, well, one of the things that strikes me as odd, and I actually had this conversation today with the Virginia Military Officers Association, with whom I got a picture, is that everything we did when I was in the military was based on TTPs. For those of you who didn't serve, that's tactics, techniques, and procedures. And we had a standard operating procedure for nearly everything, and we established those standard operating procedures in TTPs, because that was how things worked well. And in the administrative side of the VA House, there's no such thing. And so, what you end up with, Val, is an absolute lack of uniformity in services delivered, and in time, and mostly the administrative side of the shop. And I want to sort of speak to that for a second. I want to differentiate, because I think it needs to be done, when we discuss the problems in VA, between the women and men who are frontline caregivers, the nurses, and the doctors, the people who interact with our veterans. Because I've had, candidly, far more experience with those mostly amazing people than I wish I had. I have a father-in-law who's in the VA system, and I've spent a lot of time speaking with his caregivers, meeting with them, and then listening to him as he talks about the care that he gets. The doctors, the nurses are wonderful people who are there for a great reason. They have a heart for care and giving. They want to honor the people who honor this country. And yes, they're not perfect, and there might be exceptions to this rule, but let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. The problem in VA is that there's no uniformity on the administrative side, that we see operations in one place that might work well, let's say, for example, Maguire in Richmond, and another place that, for whatever reason, are eighteen or twenty-four months behind on reimbursing care providers, and say, I don't know, Roanoke? And that's, there's no excuse for that. So, what I think would work, and what we've advocated on behalf of, as it relates to the administrative failures, and I want to clarify that they're by and large administrative at the VA, is looking at best practices, seeing who's doing well, seeing who's doing poorly, Arizona, and then doing what works, and standardizing across the board. And the irony is, again, that women and men who've served in our armed forces totally get this, but for some reason, the VA that cares for them doesn't. And so, we're going to keep being loud on that. I had the opportunity and honor to visit the VA Center, the outpatient clinic in the Charlottesville area, I think, a week ago. And again, the caregivers are great, and we talked to them about the administrative side. There are a lot of people who want to attack this problem. We need to get a good VA director in who has a heart and passion for taking care of the people who take care of America. That's where I think the changes need to be made.
Thank you very much for your call, Val. For those of you who are still, for those of you who are still on the line, if you would like to ask a question at any point during tonight's conversation, please dial star three. And if you would like to sign up for our email e-newsletter list, please dial star six at any time. Again, if you would like to ask a question of your congressman this evening, dial star three. If you would like to sign up for our e-newsletter, dial star six.
Is it Cleve in Flavanna? Are you on the line, sir?
Yes, Congressman, this is Cleve in Flavanna.
How's it, sir?
Thank you for taking my call, Congressman, and for having these sessions. They were very informative, and I enjoy them. My question concerns with the departure of Speaker of the House, Bill, or Paul Ryan. What is the prospect that some of those four hundred bills that have been passed by the House that are languishing in the Senate are going to see any action?
Well, I, you know, first of all, you're very well informed, because I think you started to say Speaker of the House, Bill Howell, and I don't know what percentage of the population of Virginia could name the former House Speaker, but I commend you on being engaged in the political process. Second of all, I think there are really two questions at work here, and that is, number one, is Speaker Ryan the party? Now, we know he's retiring, right? But what he said is that he hopes that he'll serve through his term, which would get him out to the first week of January of 2018, at, I'm sorry, 2019. At this point, I want to take him at his word, and really, I don't know, maybe it's because I want to still focus on trying to legislate and do our jobs, and not be distracted by political fighting. I also think that any conjecture, should Ryan decide to stay at least past November, and certainly through January of nineteen, on who's going to be the next speaker is a distraction from us doing that. And then, I think the second part of the question is, if we had different leadership in the House, would it impact what happened in the Senate? Now, there's a lot of talk being bantered about in back circles about changing Senate rules. Certainly, Democrat former Senate Leader Harry Reid said that when the Democrats took the majority after the 2016 elections, they would exercise the nuclear option and abolish the Byrd Rule. He was wrong as it related to his prognostication. And so far, Leader McConnell has shown what some would describe as restrained, and what others would describe as an inability to work to get things done. I have to tell you, I'm frustrated. I think you make an amazing point in the fact that we're now beyond four hundred bills that have passed the House that are languishing in the Senate. There's nothing that frustrates me more. I don't know, though, how you break that logjam on the Senate side, given the numbers game and the current political climate, and I think we discussed this probably most aptly as it relates to the Iran nuclear deal. You got a ton of people, including Chuck Schumer, who thought that this deal was a horrible idea two years ago, and literally, in the case of Brad Sherman, who I hold in high regard, Democrat from California, who said that the next president should junk the thing. And now that it's happened, there's sort of a uniform hue and cry against those actions. So, I'm afraid that the words of Arthur Vandenberg in 1948, "All politics should stop at the water's edge," have sort of left town, and that's tragic. Now, the good news is that today, we had an area in foreign affairs on things like sanctions against despotic regimes, and countering foreign propaganda intended on influencing American governance in elections, and it was incredibly bipartisan. And that's a step in the right direction. The bad news is that it's so exceptional that I actually remember it and thought it was, you know, sort of a special moment. But I don't have any optimism that a change in Speaker is going to change how the Senate behaves in the near term, and candidly have hope, not because of, and I don't dislike Paul Ryan, but I don't have any great affinity for any individual. Instead, I do for ideas. But I don't, I hope that we don't have to deal with finding a new Speaker between now and January of 2019, because I think it's a distraction that keeps us from doing the work that most of us, I hope, intended to do when they came here. So, thank you again, and we're going to move to Donna, who is in Pennsylvania County. Right now, by the way, I always try to keep track of how many callers we've had from where, and right now Franklin County is in the lead with the most callers. Donna, are you on the line?
I am. How are you?
I'm doing well, ma'am. How are you?
I'm doing fine. Thank you so much for hosting this and giving us an opportunity to ask questions. My question is, in the last day or two, there has come out news that the FDA wants, is considering making changes to the tobacco, to genetically modify the seed and the plant so that it produces less nicotine. And I certainly understand the purpose for cutting down nicotine, but I just wanted to know how you feel about it and how informed you were on this, because it will have a really big impact on the farmers', you know, cost effectiveness of their struggling, as it is, to produce crops.
So, I've met with, so I've met with a group of tobacco farmers, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but I think we got about three more callers.
Mm-hmm.
I met with tobacco farmers, I think, last month, and I want to say I was in Pennsylvania County, but I can't. I'd have to go back and look at my, at my schedule to figure out exactly where I was, because we had about seven meetings that day. And what I learned in that meeting was that there is currently not a seed that exists that they could plant that would meet the proposed requirements for nicotine. It would essentially destroy the industry for, in this country, for a number of years while they sought to find a way to comply. Now, having said that, I honor the tradition and legacy of those farmers. I wouldn't suggest that anybody start smoking. Having said that, there's a colloquialism that I think might be apt here, that the road to hell is paved with good intentions. The fifth district of Virginia in particular has really taken it on the chin in the jobs realm as it relates to loss of industries. We've lost thousands and thousands of jobs in furniture, Lane Furniture, Roy Hill, a lot of Basset, God bless the folks from Basset who are still here in the Henry Martinsville area. Burlington's gone. In the textile industry, Dan River Mills, which used to have literally thousands and thousands of employees, is gone. And it strikes me as ridiculous that people who've never had to worry about weather, plant a crop, and then sort of tend to it scrupulously, and then harvest it and hope that global markets didn't destroy their family and their livelihood, are dictating a policy wherein the proposed numbers quite literally would require that we figure out how to do something that no one knows how to do right now. And that's where we are. So, while I in no way, shape, or form commend smoking, et cetera, to young people, I also don't think that people in Washington, DC, that don't have any idea of the plight of our farmers, should be dictating policy that might destroy our farmers. So, I'm very familiar with the proposed regulations you're discussing, and that's kind of where I am. I think, you know, again, we need to do what we can to ensure that people live healthy lifestyles, but we don't need to destroy one group of people in order to sort of virtue signal our good intentions otherwise.
Right. Well, I appreciate that. I think it's something, if it is done, it should be done over a period of time, and not, you know, in a one-year period, when people don't have the opportunity to adjust to it.
So, quite literally, these farmers have a number of different varieties of seeds and techniques that they can use, and if the numbers that have been trotted out there are what they did overnight, they wouldn't have a crop.
Right.
Because there's no way to achieve those goals. And that's just, that's, I mean, I understand the intentions are honorable, but that's just the wrong thing to do to our farmers. It makes no sense.
Well, I appreciate you've met with some farmers and discussed it with them. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your call, ma'am. For those of you who would like to ask a question, please dial star three at any time. And for those of you who would like to sign up for our email e-newsletter list, please dial star six at any time. We are going to take our next call from Edmund.
Edmund, are you on the line, sir?
Yes, I am.
So, go ahead with your question. You're calling from Pennsylvania County?
Yes, sir. What I was wanting-
Which brings Pennsylvania into a tie with Franklin County for first place of the night. Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your, for your, for your listening. What I was asking about, you know, I heard about the infrastructure, how that bill was going to go up to Congress, and, you know, that would definitely help the, help the economy and help a lot of, you know, because that's basically, a lot of the income come from construction and stuff like that. What's the deal with that as of now?
So, the infrastructure bill is rolling right along. One of the things that we're very hopeful for is that we're going to get money in that infrastructure bill, and this won't mean a lot to folks maybe in Rappahannock County or Green County or Falkir, but it sure as heck matters to people in Henry County and Franklin County and those surrounding areas, that we're going to get money to complete the I-73 corridor. If you've ever driven I-73 through North Carolina and hit the Virginia line, I think you come on at some point to 220, which is not a bad road. But the I-73 corridor in North Carolina is kind of like as good an interstate highway system as you could imagine, and then you get to Virginia, and candidly, it's embarrassing. And so, federal assistance by way of that in the infrastructure plan would go a long way towards making that a little bit more palatable to me. You know, we have not nearly the infrastructure that we need as it relates to high-speed broadband, particularly in rural areas, et cetera. The state needs to move decisively to empower localities to move. The federal government needs to look at regulatory climate and help providers move. But what really drives jobs, particularly in rural Virginia, and particularly in an area that really has, you know, historically been a great, great manufacturing area, that's Virginia's south side, is four-lane highways and- eh, is four-lane highways and rail offerings. Um, and so, um, I, I think that, that, that I-73 corridor will help immensely. I think the I-58, I'm sorry, the 58 corridor across Virginia, which a lot of folks don't know is the largest, uh, four-lane thoroughfare in Virginia. It goes all the way from, uh, the ocean to, 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 uh, Jonesville and Lee County. Um, that's the sort of thing that, that keeps employers, uh, in localities, it gets lo- lo- oh, excuse me, it gets employers to localities. So, again, I mean, w- we feel like we're, we're moving in the right direction here. But there's some, some things that I really want to see, uh, particularly as it relates to folks, uh, in the 5th District and, and specifically in this instance, in, in South Side.
And, and my other question, you know, I'm middle class and my health insurance has got so irate. It's, it's over seventeen hundred a month for me and my wife and kids. And they projected for it to be even higher. Is it any, is it any hope of getting this healthcare changed?
Well, I, you know, a lot of this comes down to what happens in November. Um, again, I, I voted, uh, well, I didn't vote because we stopped it from ever getting to a vote, uh, against the first, um, Trump Care bill. Because I couldn't find any data that said it would push down premiums and deductibles. That's the cost that hit you and your family in the, in the gut. Um, I voted for the second one. This is a bill that the bipartisan, or the nonpartisan Congressional Budget Office suggested would drive down premiums and deductibles. If you, if you, and you do, if you know about healthcare, they hadn't gone, those numbers hadn't gone down in years. So, even if they went down one or two percent, let alone 24% as some projected, um, that'd be great. Um, but we passed that bill, uh, and then the Senate, uh, essentially sat on it, uh, and, and wouldn't let it get to a vote. Uh, they, they wouldn't let it get to a, a number where they thought it had a chance of passing. That frustrates me immensely, because, you know, anybody who's been paying attention knows that the healthcare, um, industry is, is, you know, one-sixth, one-seventh of the entire economy, which means that if you're a working family in Virginia, if you're a working family anywhere, one-sixth to one-seventh of what you're spending. And, you know, I will tell you something. Generally speaking, when we, you know, y- y- you, you get an Affordable Care Act, don't look at the name, look at the outcome. And the reality is that since we passed Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act, the only thing that's happened to the cost to consumers is they've gone up faster. Um, so I guess the definition of crazy is doing the same thing again and again and expecting a different result. Um, but this thing is broken. Uh, however, having said that, until we either repeal the draconian Byrd Rule in the Senate or, uh, get enough people to get common sense reform in place that can push the costs down, I, I, I don't have good news. But again, I would direct you back to this fact. Anthem, Optima, Blue Cross, Kaiser, all the giant healthcare providers supported Obamacare, endorsed Obamacare, asked for Obamacare. And if you wonder why, the insurance companies support it. You don't need to do anything except for look at their stocks, look at their profits. They've all gone up. They've all gone up at an exceptional rate. And the only other thing going up is the amount of money that we pay for our health insurance. So, uh, I, I wish I could tell you that it was near-term relief. Candidly, I think a lot of that comes down to what happens in November. Uh, the healthcare plan that we passed, uh, the one, uh, just like, yeah, I opposed, the first one even got kind of hollered at it by the White House staff. Uh, hollered at for opposing it. Um, but the one that we supported, uh, nonpartisan data says it would have driven costs down. That should be our goal. Drive costs down to the end user, and that's you. So, thank you immensely for, for calling, Edmund. And I think now we're Karen, who's calling from Charlottesville, which puts Charlottesville now, which had been tied with Franklin and Pennsylvania County, in the lead for the most callers. Karen, are you on the line?
Yes. First, I want to say thank you for your service to us and to the state. Um, really appreciate it. And you, I love your town halls. They're very informative. Thank you for those. And, um, I've never asked a question before, but, uh, when I came on tonight, came in, you were in the middle of, um, I caught the tail end of you saying that, um, something about you believe that Department of Defense should be held accountable for its budget. And there's, there's currently no way to, to see that where every penny goes. Is that, that's correct? Is that right?
Right. So, so, you know, I, I got a phone call today from a friend with whom I served in the military. I was a captain when he was a lieutenant. And he's in DC and he called me and he's on the O-6 list, which is the Colonel List. And I, I told him clearly the Army was in dire need for good people because he made the O-6 list. But, um, eh, great guy. And I have a great compassion and, and, and empathy and sympathy for the women and men who, who put their lives on the line, really, and you never know their names, to, to create an America where we strive to be a perfect union, but we're not there yet.
Right.
And so, eh, I voted against the National Defense Authorization Act, and I did that. And that was a, that was a really tough vote, eh, because there were a lot of people putting pressure on me. I've indicated that I might be interested one day if I have the opportunity and honor to serve on, on the Armed Services Committee. And there were people who said, "Well, if you vote against this, you'll never be on the Armed Services Committee", which sounds like a statement of fact that I sort of view as a threat. But I voted against it because federal law says that every federal government entity, there are 15 secretaries, 15 different executive branch entities, of which Department of Defense is one, shall, shall, meaning has to, be audited. And the only one that's never been audited is the Department of Defense. And I, I support the F-
Well, what, why? Why? Why is that?
Eh, it's, it's amazing to me. So, we pass laws and then people break them with impunity, and then we don't do anything when they do. And so, my point is, I'm going to vote against this bill, which I would love to support.
Mm-hmm.
Because until we comply with the law, and, and again, it galls me, whether it's, whether it's, you know, federal cannabis policy, whether it's immigration policy, whether it's not auditing one particular secretariat, um, it galls me when we, when we look the other way while laws are broken and then ruin people's lives when they do it. And, and so that was sort of a protest vote, right? I mean, and, and again, I said earlier, and this is my, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to let you talk in a second. I'm sorry. Don't, don't let Karen off line.
No, that's okay. That's all right. I want to tell you where I'm coming from, but you go ahead.
But, 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 y- you know, m- maybe supporting our women and men in uniform means making sure we're being good stewards of the resources that we use to, to, to fund them so that the rest of America can know that we're not wasting. As, as I've said repeatedly, I support go- government funding of our military. I don't support government funding of military waste. And until we do the audit, we can't tell which is which. So, so, so go ahead, Karen.
Well, what I, the reason I'm concerned about it is, I had 30 years in federal government. I retired from the National Ground Intelligence Center and-
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of us military insubordinate and had concerns about where the money was going. We saw things that weren't right and nobody was held accountable. And I actually know an officer who, uh, has the boxes and boxes of proof of unaccounted equipment, money, uh, something even showed up for sale by serial number on the internet, on eBay. And he went to authorities way up. And what did they do? Threatened his career and threatened him. And, eh, you know, they, they knew they could get away with it. And so, I mean, he is in fear for his life. But my, the point I'm making is, why aren't they held accountable? Employees, civilians, and military want them held accountable. There would be more money to be spent where it should and fairly. Um, this is our tax money too.
That's right.
So, what can be done, what can be done about it?
Well, ultimately, and, and, and this is a very interesting, uh, uh, circumstance, our communication. I would encourage you to reach out to us, um, our blog.
Oh, oh, I, oh, I could, oh, he, uh, he could give you the bu- a book, and I could too.
Well, well, I, I'm asking you to do it, but, or at least to talk to us.
I'd love to.
Um, I, I'm all too familiar with, um, sort of the paradigm wherein individuals are not held accountable inside the federal government. I've seen, and I don't want to digress, because again, I think we have one caller after you.
Yes.
I don't want to digress to sort of minutia. But I had a very long talk with a, with a, with an individual who spent 34 years in the FBI today about some of the things that are ongoing with DOJ and FBI. Uh, I honor the service of, of the vast bulk of women and men who serve us, uh, both in, in, in the military but in federal service like the FBI, et cetera. Uh, but that doesn't mean that they're without flaw. And eh, until we, you know, I worked Medicaid fraud for a period of time, uh, in the Attorney General's Office in Virginia. And I was frustrated. It was post nine-eleven. We would find eh, someone defrauding the taxpayers of $250,000, $300,000 a year. Go to the FBI, because that was the only recourse we had. And they said, "Uh, how much is it?" "Uh, $300,000"? "We don't have the bandwidth." And, and the message that sent amazingly frightening, right? It was because there weren't enough agents working out of the, out of the field offices at the time. And we were focused on a, 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 an international terror threat, et cetera. But i- if you contemplate a hundred people stealing $300,000 a year versus 10 people stealing a million dollars a year, um, the hundred people are, are hurting the taxpayers more. So, again, I, I want to be real clear. I want to support that. And by the way, I was at INJIC, I think, last week, and I'm getting a nod, um, speaking to some of the fine folks there. But just because I spoke to fine folks doesn't mean everybody there is fine. There's great people in Congress on both sides of the aisle.
Well, they don't, they want, they, they don't let everybody get to you when you visit.
Uh, uh, what are we talking about?
When you visit there, you don't, not everybody can talk to you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. No, we've, I can, I, I don't want to speak to that too much on this phone call.
Right. I know, I know.
Background messages. And, and, and of course, when we visit, there's a, there's a story that they want to tell. And I think they should tell it about the good work that they do to protect Americans and,
Yes.
and our, and our women and men in, in, in the field across the globe. Um, but there's another story that needs to be told. So, uh, again, I would encourage you to, to, to reach out. And I want to leave it with about that much specificity. But if you, um, if you reach out, um, uh, let them know that, that you and I spoke on the call. And, and hopefully they can expedite this. I'm going to ask my folks to be looking out for your contact.
Okay, I will. And, but I would hope that there is some way that, that you, and I, hopefully, you're not the only other, uh, you know, person in some power that, that is interested in holding DoD accountable for where all the money goes.
Well, I'm trying to do that now. The problem is that the Chairman of the House Intelligence Committee is asking DOJ to provide documents, and DOJ is telling them no, right? I mean, the thing that blows my mind is, if you've read the Constitution, Article One is, is the one that gives the power to fund entities of the federal government to the legislative branch. And that nobody's had sort of the presence of mind to say, "You know what? Until you tell us what you're doing with the money we're giving you, we're going to stop giving you money."
Or just defund them. Yeah, just, just to do that. That'll, that'll change things. We'd love to see that.
That's, that's, that's pretty, it seems like a pretty decent, decent way to get things done. So-
Well, thank you. I won't take your time anymore, but I want to say thank you. And I will contact your office tomorrow.
Thank you, Karen. And, uh, and I'm looking at staff right now. I want you guys to be on the lookout. Um, and, and certainly you're welcome to contact the Charlottesville office or the DC office. You can contact the Danville office if you want to, but either of those two, and, and I'd love to have, um, the opportunity to, to hear more. And I, and I, I wish we'd, I mean, uh, uh, this is probably not the best forum, but, but I appreciate your service.
Thank you so much.
And thank you. And I think this is going to be the last call tonight. A gentleman from Mecklenburg County, uh, I think it says Atmar. Is that correct? Atmar, are you on the line?
That is correct. Atmar.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing great. Thanks for asking. How are you doing?
Well, I said it earlier, I'll say it again. Uh, everything is not as I would have it if I got to dictate the terms, but, but I really can't complain. And I think I'd, I'd probably be ungrateful, uh, or ungrateful if I did.
That's right. Uh, I'm a retired Navy chief. And I've been teaching for 24 years after I retired. My, I have a two-point question. When I retired, because I worked in jet fuels for 24 years in the military.
Right.
And when I retired, I put in, in VA, and this goes with all my shipmates, because we were involved with jet fuels and we had JP-5, JP-4, JP-1, JP, you know, all the JPs and aviation gasoline. And then all the, uh, research done on that, because when we were purifying, we were breathing all the vapors.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's detrimental to this, you know, the CNS, the central nervous system. But when I put in my, uh, claim to the VA back in 1975, when I retired, and then finally got, got it back, it was denied. It's like they're, I, I don't know why. And after I have all my buddy statements and everything else, so, you know, some of that stuff was denied. And I served all over. I even had my eyeball frozen in the Antarctic. I got 10% for that. But that was my, my question there on, on the VA system. What are you doing?
So, let me interrupt you and, and get you to hold the second question. Do not let Atmar go. I think your question is, and, and pardon me for a little bit of bias, as I summarize them, please correct me if I'm wrong. Why is there a cottage industry in VA in denying service-related injury claims of individuals who served? And I would outline that by illustrating the, the decades that it took to get an acknowledgement that Agent Orange, the defoliant used in Vietnam, was deleterious to the good health of our service members.
Exactly. Because it-
Uh, sort of the, the, the long fight over Gulf War Syndrome. And then it took us quite literally probably 40 years to acknowledge the reality and, and, and praise God, we finally have CTE and TBI. Um, and, and I think we did because it became so prevalent, uh, in places like Iraq and, Iraq and Afghanistan. Um, is that, am I in the ballpark?
Oh, you're in the ballpark, because you know the South Vietnam Army quit spraying in 1972. And I was there-
Right. So-
-in 1971. So, when, you know, as you drive around and you have your vehicles and you have pollen, it's all stuck on the vehicles. When they were coming back on the carrier, it, it, it looked like pollen on the, on the airplanes.
So, anybody who, um, served in the Army, and it's, it's a parallel, eh, uh, is familiar with the term kark or kark paint. Uh, and that was, uh, the paint that we put on our military vehicles to help them shed the persistent chemical and biological agents that an enemy might use. And then the depleted uranium munitions, et cetera. And, you know, I've spent a lot of time around a lot of those things. And God's got a plan, and I hope I, that it never manifests itself. Look, um, we need to protect our service members from imminent threat. Um, and so that sometimes, uh, means that we create circumstances that, um, eh, you know, we later learn, um, are also threats. What we also need to do is not deny that, um, when it relates to a scientifically determined pattern of outcomes for these same service members, uh, that manifest itself and a deleterious effect on the quality of their life. Um, you know, eh, eh, it's a dangerous business. And, 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 and those of us who, you know, undertake that business know that when we do it. Uh, but I think the benefit of the bargain is that we won't be abandoned on the back end. Um, so, you know, eh, eh, what happened with things like Agent Orange, with your claim, et cetera, are, you know, really shameful circumstances and, and stories. Uh, what we need to do moving forward, and I think and I hope we're trying, um, is try not to let those things, um, happen again. Um, having said that, uh, I would ask, uh, if you, and you're calling from Mecklenburg, if you'd reach out to our Danville office, if you feel like, uh, there's been a circumstance wherein you, 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 you'd like to appeal your, your claim. Uh, and we've got great people there who can help you do that. Uh, I cannot guarantee you an outcome, only an effort. Um, but I'll tell you that one of the more moving things that, that we've had, uh, the necessity of doing is recognizing a service member, a former Green Beret, uh, who, who died, um, really in the global war on terror, not of a, a combat wound, but of cancer that was service-related. And, um, and, um, at least the government in this circumstance was willing, and this was a young man, uh, with a wife and kids. Um, sorry. And, um, and our government was willing in that instance to acknowledge that and to address that fact. Um, but, you know, you know, I guess this is the second time I've used this cliche. But, you know, sometimes, um, eh, bad things come of good intentions. Our responsibility though is to honor your service and, 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 and men and women like yourself. So, I can't go back and, and address what happened in the seventies. I can only say that it's my belief, uh, that I think has been manifested in my action, not just my words, uh, that we need to be honest brokers, that we need to care for the people who've cared for this country. Yeah. And you had a second part of your question, sir?
Yeah, that was, uh, because now, now I'm an educator, but to go back to the first part, and I'll get to the second part in a minute. Because we, we had effects of, uh, acute exposures to fuel vapors. And a lot of us are now suffering for, from neuropathy. But that, that goes on with the VA, because, you know, they've denied us all, you know, our, uh, claims and everything. So, and I don't know why that is. And even though, uh, we've had all the, uh, documentation in there. And now as an educator, how do you feel about, uh, No Child Left Behind?
Well, we, we got very lucky in Virginia, uh, with No Child Left Behind. Um, because I'm not a big fan- I'm not a big fan.
Yeah, neither am I.
Um, Virginia was able to opt out of, uh, uh, Virginia was able to opt out of No Child Left Behind because of the standards of learning. Now, having said that, the standards of learning are something that I was very happy to, uh, participate in, in dismantling to some degree. I was the patron of a bill that rolled back, uh, the number of mandatory SOL tests. I think we reduced, I think from thirty-four to thirty-two, but I'd have to go back and double-check, um, the burden, because, you know, I got two, two kids, um, one who's graduated from public school in Virginia, and one who's, uh, about to finish up, uh, tenth grade in public school in Virginia, and, and, and I was certified to teach and actually student-taught, um, and we're testing our kids into oblivion, and we're hamstringing creative teachers, um, by virtue of a, of a test schedule that says, um, you can't think outside the box. And one thing I know to a metaphysical certainty is that not all kids learn the same. I remember I had a teacher named Pete Knapp, uh, who was also a competitive water skier of all things, he taught me science in middle school, and he talked about physics while discussing a wake flip, and, and, and I never took physics, um, but I learned more about it and sort of with, with, with rapt attention, uh, when a, when a, when a man who I admired had enough time to talk about, uh, inertia and momentum, uh, and force exerted, and that's what happens when good teachers can engage kids who might otherwise sort of be distracted, et cetera. Uh, so, so I, so, um, I wanna, I wanna have standardized testing, standardized testing in some way, because I believe in accountability, but we don't need to test our teachers and our students into oblivion. Uh, again, though, No Child Left Behind was never foisted entirely upon Virginia because we exempted out because we had, um, had the standards of learning. Having said that, um, there was a big fight when I was in the General Assembly over foisting No Child Left Behind on Virginia. My argument at that time was, um, you know, number one, we shouldn't be measuring Virginia students against forty-nine other states, we should be measuring Virginia students against the world, but No Child Left Behind impacted forty-nine other states, and, you know, while we always wanna see, uh, our schools and our Congress and our, and our, and all our institutions be the best they can be, Virginia has historically outperformed the nation. And so if the nation's standard is No Child Left Behind and ours is SOL, and we're having the fourth or fifth best public school system in the nation by particular measures, why on earth should we adopt the standards of people who, ninety percent of whom are behind us? Um, so I'm not a big fan. Uh, I think, um, you know, again, this is a good example of the government, uh, sort of naming things something and then getting an entirely different outcome. Um, I do like accountability and standardized testing. I don't like it when it's done so frequently and when it's made so central to so, sort of the determination of, uh, of success or failure, that it destroys the ability of creative teachers to engage students and destroys the ability of students, uh, to learn to think critically because they have to figure out what the answer to the next standardized test question is. So I don't know if that directly addresses your question, but we've sort of dodged a bullet there in, in Virginia. Having said that, uh, we have our own equivalent there too. Um, having said that, while, again, I support accountability, um, sometimes you can go too far, and, and that's why we carry a bill to sort of roll back the standardized testing burden. It succeeded, by the way.
Well, that, that's good, you know, and, and on the first part of the question, you know, I contacted the Senator, uh, in Virginia years ago on my thing on, uh, the VA, Senator Warner, and because I'm not a Democrat, nothing happened, but, uh, I'd just like to need your contact number, you know, for, um, my appeal for your office in Danville, and I'd like to contact you, and, and then I'd like your answer on the second part of the question about the, uh, No Child Left Behind.
So the Danville office number is four, three, four, seven, nine, or one. Sorry, I reverted back into artillery mode for a moment.
Uh, I, I got it. I got it.
Seven, nine, one, two, five, nine, six. Um, and let me say this about that, um, I don't, I, I find myself in the awkward position of ending this phone call defending Mark Warner. Um, I don't, you, you, I hope and I presume, um, that you don't know that, 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 that his office wasn't able to help you by virtue of, of, of political affiliation. Um, our office might not be able to help you, but our office will try.
I understand that. Yeah, I understand that, but when I called him several times-
And I, and I hope that his office-
...I got different people all the time, and then I got the same, uh, response from his office that I did from the VA, you know, uh, all the time. It was the exact same response.
Well, let me, let me tell you that if you call the Danville office number we just gave you, uh, you, you wanna talk to either Denise or Matt, and, uh, again, I cannot promise an outcome, I can promise an effort. I, I certainly don't know the, the, the exact specifics, but I do, I really am troubled by the fact that there's been really a well-documented history of the VA sort of denying, uh, what I think is demonstrated reality as it relates to a number of things. I think the best illustrator is Agent Orange, just, I think it's really incontrovertible that, that, that it impacted, uh, people's physical well-being. Now, what the right thing to do, uh, is, you know, um, w- we can debate the level of benefits, et cetera, but don't tell people that it's all in their head, that's, that's ridiculous, and-
Yeah.
And, um, so thank you for your service, not only in the military, but as a teacher.
Like, some of my shipmates, I had one that had a lung transplant, one that's waiting a lung transplant, and ten that have cancer.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I don't know the total number of, of, of folks with whom you served, but those are, those are some pretty darn compelling numbers.
Yeah, out of one hundred.
Yeah, that's, uh, I don't know what the cancer population is out of one hundred, but I guarantee you that it's not twelve or thirteen percent, particularly at your age, so that says something. Again, thank you, and, uh, I wanna, I wanna say this, 'cause, 'cause Matt's reaching out for the phone. Um, thanks to everybody for being on the call, I don't know the total numbers yet. Uh, Charlottesville had the most callers tonight, um, Franklin and Pennsylvania tied for second. The reason we do these telephone town halls is because, and I'm looking at the list, uh, quite literally, if you go from, uh, the farthest northernmost caller, just who got through, uh, to the farthest southernmost caller, you cover, cover well over a hundred miles. Uh, if you look at the total, uh, population of localities who spoke on the phone tonight, just people who got through, not people who listened, uh, we're talking about probably three, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, uh, maybe low on that, um, and, and I just, I, I, you know, the opportunity to speak to so many folks at once is something that we, that we really cherish, and, and those of you who stayed on the call, we're, we're genuinely grateful, and, uh, thank you for this, this, this opportunity to serve, uh, wonderful people like y'all selves. Have, have a great night. Matt?
Well, thank you Congressman Garrett, and thank you all for joining us. Uh, for those of you who didn't get to ask a question this evening, you're more than welcome to visit www.tomgarrett.house.gov/Contact, and you can see all of the resources available where you can reach our office, whether it's email, fax, phone, social media, or any other particular, uh, instance where you'd like to reach us. Thank you again for taking the time to join us this evening for our seventh Virginia Fifth District Interactive Town Hall meeting, twenty-seven, excuse me, twenty-eighteen. Uh, have a wonderful evening and good night.